Excuse me, welcome. I'd like to call this meeting of January eighth, 2019, Happy New Year, to order. And today, we're going to start with public participation regarding Ascent Classical Academy, their charter application. So, and what we'll do is we're starting at four thirty-five, so for the full thirty minutes, we'll go to five oh-six, so just so you know, we didn't truncate the time. So, we have our first speaker, well, and actually, each person will have two minutes to speak, and you'll know that your time is running up by looking at the lights over at the podium. When it turns yellow, you'll know that you have thirty seconds remaining. And when it's red, we ask you to stop, so that we can give as many people as they want time to speak. All right? So, Laura, is that good? Great. Let's start with Stacy Nagel.
Do I need to speak in the microphone? Okay, great. Hello. I am here today to ask you to support Ascent Classical Academy Flatirons. My name is Stacy Nagel, and I live in Northland, which is in the western part of Adams Twelve School District. My husband, though, works at Ball Aerospace just down the road here, and he's worked there for over twenty years, so Boulder's very familiar to us. I have five children, and I have been home educating for fifteen years. One child has graduated from homeschooling, and one is a junior at Northland High School in their STEM program. But the younger three, I hope to enroll in Ascent Classical Academy Flatirons. I believe in this classical model as a firm foundation for all learning, and I have strived to give my children this kind of education at home, and when my older two have left for high school and college, they have flourished. What I like most about the program at Ascent Classical Academy is the emphasis on language. The ability to read and write comprehensively and clearly is a skill, I believe, to lead to success in all higher learning. A child of mine does have a mild learning disability, and she has been tutored in the Barton Method, which is also based on Orden and Gillium, and she is currently now a voracious reader and becoming a very decent writer. And at Ascent, all children are going to be learning the, a program, the RIGS curriculum for phonics, based on Orden and Gillium as well, and so I feel like children who might have been on the edge of having, being labeled to being disabled, having reading disability, will not be, be there, because they'll have had what essentially was my dyslexic child's extra tutoring, will be the regular curriculum. And then continuation with Latin and English grammar, to even continue to make that a stronger mastery of the language. And so, that's the best thing I think about this, and I, I hope that you will approve the charter for a flat, for Ascent Classical Academy Flatirons, and I thank you for your service.
Okay, our next speaker is Lindsay Potts.
Hi, I am Lindsay Potts. I have two school-aged children, second grade and kindergarten, who I homeschool as it's the only affordable way for my kids to receive a classical education. When my oldest was entering kindergarten, she was accepted at peak-to-peak charter school, which I could see from my kitchen window. I was going to walk my child to one of the best schools in the state, but turned it down in order for her to get a classical education, which meant homeschooling. Wondering if I was crazy, if I'd regret it, but I haven't. I love the classical model of education even more with each year, and can't imagine anything else for my kids. Boulder Valley School District lost out on my children due to not offering a classical model school, but that will change with the acceptance of Ascent Classical Academy of Flatirons. I would register and send them tomorrow if I could. The first I heard of this Flatiron School was four weeks ago yesterday through word-of-mouth, and here I am today, asking you to provide this school alternative to my kids. Over the last few years, I've looked up local classical school alternatives to homeschooling. There are only two close enough to consider, both in Boulder County, both Protestant, faith-based private schools. That's not affordable, and that's not diverse. If Boulder wants to maintain its name in leading education, if it wants to offer affordable options for all people, if it wants to continue to uphold diversity of all kinds, including diversity of education, you need this school too. Thank you.
Okay, our next speaker is Derek Schuler, who has given an additional two minutes from Kim Gilmarten.
Hi, good evening. I mean, my name is Derek Schuler. I'm a director of Ascent Classical Academies, and I'm honored to have the chance to talk to you briefly about our proposal for a school. I would like to thank the DAC and the staff. I realize that we've all worked under a pretty short review timeline, and we've been glad to work collaboratively with the district, just on that timeline, just to get that process done. I don't have a whole lot of time to go through and address everything that you're going to hear in the staff report and from the DAC, but I do want to hit a couple of highlights, and we'll be following up. I do expect to follow up with all of you tomorrow and provide a little more, some more information and background material that would be informative and help you guys in deciding what would be in, what would be a good course of action moving forward. We do believe that the approval of our school is in the best interest of students in the community, BVSD, and, and the community as well. I think a really important indicator that was in the staff report was enrollment number when we submitted the application back in August of last year. Since that time, we now have over five hundred and fifty intends to enroll, so we do have good momentum and interest in, in this program, as you've heard and will continue to hear from other parents. A couple of highlights, like I said, I just have a couple of points that we're going to have time to hit on right now, but we do have a pretty comprehensive student services plan and how we address the needs of all children, especially those that are traditionally educationally disadvantaged, and those are kids with a variety of, what's typically seen as challenges, from full IEPs, requiring special ed, students with English, LLs, or students learning the English language, students needing other accommodations, known as 504 plans, and a whole range and spectrum of additional supports. So, we'll provide that, that document, which is actually an operational document. We, we looked at the application as a framework of, can we put a program together? Is this enough for you guys to understand what the program would look like? But we will provide that additional documentation that gets in really some nuts and bolts of our approach, since that was mentioned in the staff report. We just, I think that's important. And I do think it's important to talk about the philosophy of our specific, the lineage of our schools, the lineage of our school and brand of classical education. So, our kind of Ridgeview Classical School up in Fort Collins was a school that Dr. Moore, who was our principal in Douglas County, was the founding principal of, and that school was actually founded by parents who wanted a classical option for their children, but at the same time, they had children with special needs. So, that's really the background at which, from which we approach serving children. So, we're not a college prep school that's looking for high SAT scores. Golden View has been successful in that regard, as a top-ten school in the state of Colorado after three years, but we really want to give children the background to flourish in life, not just to go to college. We want them to be successful at whatever they choose to do. We will provide some additional documentation and some diagrams, some good visuals on the network structure itself, because that was a big thing. Parent involvement engagement, this has been a parent-driven effort. We've had parents ask us to please replicate Golden View and what we've done in Douglas County here in Boulder, and we'll, we'll talk about that a little more as well. I think it's important to talk about the diversity of our program. You've heard a parent just talk about options like this are something that families typically have to pay for, and pay a lot of money for. In the interest of equity and excellence, that's something that we think needs to be available in the public realm. University of Colorado has one of the great, best classics department in the country, and I was going to say, they, they promote their program as being one of the most diverse in the University of Colorado system. So, I'll provide you guys a document tomorrow, and look forward to taking any other questions, but thank you.
Okay, our next speaker is Ken Crane.
Got to bring it down a little bit for the short guy. All right, good afternoon, everyone, and thanks for the opportunity to speak with you tonight, I appreciate it. My name is Ken Crane, and I live in Broome Field. I'm about two thousand feet east of the BVSD School District, but real close. I have two sons, ages eleven and thirteen, and I'm here to speak tonight in support of the Ascent Classical Academy that is under consideration, and to ask the board to also please support, and more importantly, approve, this much-needed approach to education in our community. Ascent offers a time-tested approach to education, a classical approach that has been used for centuries, and one that has been successfully implemented in other metro-sister schools. My family appreciates Ascent's focus on virtue development, its focus on critical thinking, and its use of the Socratic method. There is nothing like Ascent in the north metro area, save perhaps for private schools that are beyond the financial reach of many of you in your constituency. I know this is the best option for my children, so much so that I am willing to bet their futures on it, and I can assure you that there are many other families with whom I have spoken that feel the same way. If you build it, and if you approve it, they will come, and they will come in droves, I'm convinced. And I'll wrap up by noting that Boulder is a unique and highly educated city. Many of its leaders, people such as yourselves, are at the forefront of bringing new and creative solutions to today's challenges, so please bring that progressive leadership to bear on this issue, and support Ascent's charter as its effort, in its efforts to offer a new alternative to the children in our community. Thank you.
Okay, and I apologize if this is incorrect. Brad Swartzwelter.
Thank you, you said it very well. My name's Brad Swartzwelter, I live in Superior. My daughter goes to Superior Elementary School, and it's a little bit too open of a format. She's not thriving the way I believe she could. My two other sons did great, ending up at Fairview High School and, and flourishing quite well, because we've got one of the best school districts in the country, in my opinion. In fact, we moved here from Seattle partly because of the Boulder Valley School District, but my nine-year-old needs a much more structured place to go to school, and that's why I support Ascent, and I have high hopes that my daughter will be able to go there and flourish. It's, it's not an exclusive thing, it's a diverse thing. It's, it's going to meet her educational needs where she's at today. And if those change, if she changes, which can happen, then we've still got a solid school district behind us with the normal, with, normal, with the, the traditional schools that, that we've already got. So, I just encourage you to, don't, don't fear the charter school, embrace it as a partner, and offering more diverse opportunities for the schools, for the kids that need to go to school. So, that's all I got.
Okay, Michelle Palet.
Hi, I'm Michelle Palet, and I am supporting the charter school. I believe in the classical model. I've educated my kids at home, ages nine, eleven, and thirteen, classically, and I have loved the grammar stage, it has been so fun for my children, and them moving into the dialectic stage and able to have conversations. My thirteen-year-old is moving into the rhetorical stage and able to think critically, and the abilities to think critically have been beautiful. And so, I want my friends and my community to have access. There's not maybe one person I know that's financially accessible to the classical options that are around, so I really appreciate a public school option for that. Also, it was really great to hear that, I had not heard yet, that there are accessibilities for kids with disabilities. All three of my kids have dyslexia, my oldest has profound dyslexia, auditory discrimination, and ADHD, so the access for financial assistance in that has been super challenging as well, so knowing that there's availability and a focus there is exciting to hear. So, I just want to also reiterate the diversity of this for our community, and that I hope that we can build upon that diversity with this classical option for our community. Thank you, guys, for listening.
Okay, and again, I apologize. Andrea Kowalczuk.
That was exactly right. Hi, thank you all so much for listening to us. My name is Andrea Kowalczuk. I teach humanities to engineers at CU Boulder, and I actually teach great books to the engineers, and so I'm very excited about this school for that reason. I think one of the common misconceptions about great books is that it's a monolithic teaching that's exclusive or dogmatic, and I actually think that, that, that this form of teaching is exactly the opposite. It's not about books, it's about ideas, and really digging into ideas and challenging them, and letting them challenge you, and there's quite a lot of intellectual diversity in the program as it's laid out in the Ascent Classical School, so I'm very supportive of this. I'm also very excited about the fact that it is not turning to technology as the most essential skill that children need to learn. I have two young children, and one of them is currently in kindergarten, and he's often given the iPad to work on things, and he tells me that his teacher tells him that he's learning, but he knows he's not, and this was unsolicited completely. So, I actually think there's a lot of studies coming out recently on the problems with too much screen time at a young age, and this is something I'm really, I'm really excited about in this school. I also agree with some of the other people who have spoken about grammar. I teach writing to engineers, and as soon as I give them a grammar lesson, I see their language, or their writing improve dramatically, I think this is really crucial. And then the final thing I'll say is that I think that it's very important for young people to articulate their own values, and I think that that often gets overlooked, because we're afraid to have disagreement, and we encourage toleration, but I think actually articulating what you believe in is essential, and I think that's great about the school.
Okay, Shiloh Brooks.
Hi, my name is Shiloh Brooks, and I'm a professor at the University of Colorado, and also the director of the Engineering Leadership Program there. And I was so interested to hear about this school for the following reason. We just created a new engineering leadership program at the University of Colorado, because we're concerned with the way in which future young engineers, the kinds of problems that they're going to have to confront, with respect to artificial intelligence, smartphone applications, the way that these things affect our humanity, and we could have gone a number of different directions with respect to the question of what, what kind of curriculum we wanted to have in this engineering leadership program to prepare these young engineers to kind of face the problems of tomorrow that technology poses. And what we chose was a great books curriculum. You might wonder, well, what does that have to do with engineering and technology? These things seem to be far apart, and I would just say the following, we chose the great books curriculum for this reason. The kinds of questions that these engineers have to confront are questions that come up in the tradition of classical education, the question, what is justice? What is love? What's the difference between right and wrong? What's, what's a good thing to do for a human being, and what's a bad thing? What the great books do, in classical education in particular, is that they provide a wide variety of competing alternative answers to these questions, and one has to weigh these competing alternatives, and try to decide which alternative is the true and right alternative. And so, what we do, and I think what this school will do, is set before students competing alternative questions by way of the most profound thinkers of the past, right? And it will say to these students, here's a question, here are ten different answers by the greatest thinkers in human history, read them, set them in dialogue with one another, and you decide. And so, when I found out that this school had the possibility of being founded and flourish, and flourishing it in Boulder, I couldn't help but come and speak and say to you that we're adopting this method in the College of Engineering, and I would highly encourage primary and secondary schools to also look into this. It's, it's the only way we can face these difficulties in the future.
Okay, Kim Tavendale.
My name is Kim Tavendale, and as you can hear by the accent, I was brought up overseas. I'm originally from New Zealand. I have a third grader who's a gifted learner, and I have a sixth grader with an IEP. We're currently in the Adams Twelve District, but we, I, I'll back up. I first heard about the Classical Academies a couple of years ago when Mr. Schuler came to speak before a group of us. I was tremendously excited about this format of education, because it seemed to be a lot more like what I grew up with. I went to school in New Zealand, I went to school in Papua New Guinea under a very international curriculum, and I went to school in the American school system. So, it seemed to be a lot more like the international school systems that I had grown up with. I hoped that there would be something in my area, there wasn't. The only options were private schools, which are very expensive. So, when I heard that Flatirons, Ascent Flatirons was a possibility, I was very, very excited. What my children are learning is here is nothing like what my nieces and nephews in the UK, Canada, Australia, New Zealand are learning, what my friends in Norway, in Vienna, in Italy are learning, their kids. The Classical Academy is a chance for our children to compete on an international level with much better, better mathematical skills, which America's rating in the world is not the best. It also gives my children the opportunity, should they desire, to be able to go to university overseas, which they would not be able to successfully do if they weren't given the opportunity to avail themselves of the opportunities and education under the Classical Academy. Thank you.
Okay, Beth Paulson.
Good afternoon, members of the school board. My name is Beth Paulson. I have lived in Broome Field in the Boulder County School District for thirteen years. I have homeschooled our five children with the classical model since our oldest, who is now twenty-one, was three. Our oldest, too, homeschooled all the way through very successfully, and now are at CU in Boulder, and one's graduating a year early this year. When Golden View Classical opened, we put our three younger children in that school because it was classical. Our kids thrive there beyond anything we could have hoped. The benefits of being in a classical school, such as literature, history, Latin, classroom discussions with teachers and students outweighed those for us in homeschooling. The overarching focus on character virtues was something I loved that our kids got in the school setting, complementing qualities we encouraged in our kids at home. Our son Luke, who's here, was given the Wonder Award at the end of his fourth grade, the fourth grade year, and that was incredibly encouraging, both for Luke and for us as parents, that something we saw in him was recognized by his teachers. These qualities were emphasized throughout their classes and in their interactions within their community. My two older girls have said many times they wish that school had been available for them. It is with great enthusiasm that we, my husband and I, highly recommend Ascent Classical Academy to you for approval. I always believed our homeschool curriculum provided a strong, rigorous education, yet my kids rose to the higher standard as they strove to meet the bar set at GVCA. Unfortunately, the long distance to and from made it impossible for us as a family to continue there. We have learned that, when we learned that another group wanted to establish a similar school in our area, we immediately joined the group. We know firsthand the benefits of the educational model there, and we firmly believe it would be, it would be good for our community to have this outstanding choice in education. Clearly is worthy of, of consideration. In closing, I think it would be commendable for this board to offer this unique educational opportunities for families in our district. Thank you.
Okay, Becky Powell.
Good evening. Thank you so much for taking time. I'm Becky Powell, I live in Lewisville, Colorado, and Dr. Anderson, I'm sorry that I missed your one-hundred-days-plan. I'm here to speak in favor of Ascent. We do have two children, and we have decided to make the commute from Lewisville to Golden. We do attend Golden View Classical Academy, we feel that the distance is worth the effort, and we do carpool with another family from Lewisville, who also feels the school is worth the effort. We'd like to be back in District. We feel like this is an important thing for our district to have. One of the questions I think that has come up from the board is the question of diversity. We find that our school's quite diverse, there are many different students of different descent, but also 504 plans was one of the questions, and unfortunately, we're probably one of the reasons you don't see those numbers a little bit higher. Our kids take enzymes, and the school has worked with us so well with the doctor's notes, the kids go down and take their enzymes at lunchtime, and they allow me to go on the field trips with the kids. So, we don't have a 504 plan in place, but we do have accommodations that are put into place for us, so I'm sorry that the numbers don't reflect what they're probably doing for many of the other families there. There are kids with dyslexia that are succeeding wildly there at that school, and we have a friend whose daughter has albinism, and they're allowing accommodations. She's got a laptop, and she has a magnifying glass on her computer, so she can see the screen. There are many accommodations, and we look forward to working with you and having this school and being back in Boulder County. Thank you.
Okay, Hanif Jamal.
Good evening, and thanks for the opportunity to articulate my support for the proposed Ascent Classical Academy. My name is Hanif Jamal, and my wife and I live in Boulder with our fifth-grade daughter. While BVSD has developed a strong school system, we as a family have struggled to identify a BVSD middle school that would be conducive for our daughter to fulfill her potential. We are, we are, however, really impressed with Golden View. What stood out for us during our visit to GVCA was their laser focus on providing the best education. Their curriculum was broad and intellectually challenging. The eye-popping level of classroom discussion was supported by a very safe platform for expressing opinions and debating multiple viewpoints. The foundation for such dialogue was a talented faculty and a philosophy that valued diversity of thought. In addition, the school fostered a wonderful learning environment that was truly inclusive of all students, regardless of ethnicity, religious or political affinity, or individual life experiences. Smart kids, diverse kids, and kids with different learning styles, such as those with IEP and ALPs, was the norm at GVCA. And more importantly, they were considered cool kids. I know that if our daughter was at GVCA, she would be welcomed by the students and faculty. She would not be chastised for ethnicity, religion, intellect, challenging the status quo, or her social opinions. We liked that all kids wore a uniform, as it avoided a focus on fashion, and that cellphones or tablets were not permitted, as it encouraged student interaction, as opposed to texting and computer games. Every student we interacted with was polite, articulate, and intelligent, and thus, we were not surprised that GVCA was rated a top school. I hope the result of your due diligence concludes that adding a classical school in Boulder gives the community and five hundred and fifty families that have expressed their interest with the choice of another excellent but differentiated school. Thank you.
Okay, I believe it's Mary Jo Tinlin.
I'm Mary Jo Tinlin, I live in Superior. I'm asking that you approve the application for Ascent Classical Academy Flatirons. We're the parents of three students in BVSD, two upperclassmen at Monarch High School, and one fifth-grader at Eldo K eight. Our fifth-grader has gone there since second grade, before that, I was using a classical curriculum to homeschool him. My son knew the year and location in George Washington became president, he knew about the French Revolution, the Monroe Doctrine, the Missouri Compromise, he knew his timetables up to fifteens and square roots, and he was five years old. I'm not sure if everyone in the room knows all those things, I know I didn't know those when I was teaching him. Did he understand all of it? No, not at all, but we were building that foundation in his brain. And we let him go to what he called regular school, because he wanted that experience, and it completely changed the way he learned. And we love the school, we love his teacher, we love the principal, absolutely love it there, but we've seen him change, and we want to have that choice back again to give him that classical education. So, now we're at this point where we're wondering, what do we do to save him as a student? Do we drive to Nywhat for private school? Do we try online? Do we try to drive down to Golden? And so, we have this potential option locally, which is just so exciting, and I know that there's dozens of families that have requested to have this choice. I've read through the DAC, and I know that there's issues, but I think that these issues can be overcome if we work together, if the, the both sides work together, and so, in closing, we choose to live in Boulder Valley because of the choice in education and the quality that you offer, and we hope that we will approve Ascent for us, as well as the other families who want this choice. Thank you so much.
Okay, Lucy Nelson.
Good evening. My name is Lucy Nelson, and I am in sixth grade at Golden View Classical Academy. I'm here tonight that, to ask you that you approve the charter for Ascent Classical Academy. Here are some reasons I would like to open Ascent near me. I have been homeschooled, gone to public school, and am now in a charter school. Golden View Classical Academy has challenged me in the most in my education. My school teaches us about the different cultures and beliefs around the world, and my classmates have a respect for diversity. The curriculum is challenging and very interesting. I especially love learning about all these things. When I first came to Golden View, there was a student that struggled with his behavior and academics. I think he had a very difficult home life. I think he had a very difficult home life. He was not very kind to others and it was hard to know how to respond to him. My teacher and the principal worked with him. In the end, he became a completely different kid. This year, he is successful in his schoolwork and kind to others. He needed someone to show him that others care about him. The teachers truly know what they're doing at Golden View. They put a lot of time and effort into teaching, even though we as students aren't always pleasant. My family and I spend about one and a half hours driving to and from school each day. It would be amazing if we could have a school like Golden View closer to our home. I'm sure many others would also like it, too. Thank you for listening to my many reasons I would like you to approve the Charter for Ascent Classical Academy. Thank you for your time.
Okay, and we'll wrap this up with Melinda Nelson.
Sorry, I get emotional. That's my daughter and I'm so proud of her. So I am Melinda Nelson. I live in Broomfield. I live one block over the Boulder Valley School District line. And I'm here today to ask you to approve Ascent Classical Academy. I would love to have this school closer to us. I get up every morning and I get everyone ready, my three children and myself, to go to Golden View Classical Academy. On any given day, we spend an hour and a half on the road because we desire to have the classical teaching for our children. And I also teach at Golden View Classical Academy. I teach kindergarten. And I really enjoy teaching there and seeing students and my own children flourish in the classical education. It is very exciting to me to see them learn and grow. And all children, children that are both gifted, we challenge them, and children that are having learning disabilities. And even just encouraging from the very beginning in kindergarten, some of them that are having trouble being away from home and seeing what that's like to start to learn and grow and to comfort them and to help them to enjoy education has been a real joy for me. Before teaching at Golden View, I homeschooled my children. And being right on the border of Broomfield and Boulder, I know a lot of families in this area that are looking for this classical education. So I think if Ascent came here, that would bring in both people in district and out of district to the school. And that's what's happened at Golden View Classical Academy, is that we've brought in a lot of out-of-district students as well as in-district students. Now, the other thing that I want to speak to you about is before homeschooling my own children, I also served in the Air Force. And one of the lessons in the Air Force is the importance of paying attention to detail. And I feel like the classical teaching, or I've seen it, is helping children to really learn that fine detail. We don't have computers that they spend playing games on. We don't allow the technology in the school. I mean, they would allow computers for writing. Sorry, thank you for your time and I appreciate you really considering this Ascent Classical Academy.
All right, so we went a little bit over, but I think our next step is to go into our work session. Is that correct? So board members will head down to the square table.
Board members, you can take a short break and grab your dinner and you'll eat during your work session.